All right. So we can get started here. So first of all, welcome everyone. Thanks for joining us tonight for another OVA Town Hall online meeting. We appreciate it. My name is Lauren. I'm the Athlete Development Lead with the OVA. And joining me on the call are some of my awesome coworkers, Manager of Beach Programs Suzanne Wallace, and our Executive Director Joanne Livicich. So the topic of discussion tonight is the outdoor volleyball return to play for Stage 3 regions. And before I pass the mic on to Joanne, I just have some housekeeping items to discuss. So I'll be adding our Stage 3 Outdoor Frequently Asked Questions document into the chat box. So feel free to review that if you would like. As some of your questions, comments, or inquiries may have already been answered or covered in that document. I will also be putting the link to the OVA website where the 2020 OVA Beach Friendly's information can be found. You can take a look at that. However, Suze will be going over some of that information in her presentation. And lastly, I will let my coworkers present, and then there will be time after their presentation to go over some of your questions that you may have. So I'll be monitoring the chat box and keeping track of all the questions that you may have. So feel free to write it in there at any time, but just know that we'll be going over that at the end of the presentation. All right, so without further ado, Joanne, take it away.
Thanks Lauren. Thank you for joining us. As Lauren said, we've been having a series of Town Halls covering different topics. So I see some familiar names and faces. So thanks for joining us again. But now we just keep extending our return to play protocol and some restrictions are eased. So bear with me if some of it is similar to what you've already heard, but for some people this is new. So I'm just gonna just jump right into it so we can really have time to get into the questions and we'll be here as long as you need to answer the questions. And I also noticed we have some of other Suze's beach crew with us. So thanks for joining Kelvin in Oakland and LP as well from our athlete development side. So that's awesome to have lots of OVA staff here because we'll all be able to answer any questions that you have that Lauren will direct us in. So I will just jump into the sharing part and jump into the first piece here. They're actually starting to let me have some of the controls now. It's kind of nice. So I'm working on it. There we go. So just to get into our agenda, as Lauren said, I'm going to go over the return to play protocols for any regions in Ontario that are in Stage 3 for outdoor volleyball. And then Suze will go over her competition that she's got modified under the format that we can run in our Stage 3 regions. And also then we have a just a reminder of what our future Town Hall schedule looks like. So this is similar to return to play protocol. What, how we come to putting our return to play protocol together for Ontario Volleyball Association comes from a lot of, it takes a lot of juggling and a lot of putting pieces together. So we obviously track very closely the government regulations and what we're allowed to do and what we can't do. And it even now goes to very regional based. Where way back when we started doing this, it wasn't regional based. We always work with our public health authorities. So we also have to look to what are the requirements for health authorities? And I'll say this again, but you always have to adhere to your local public health authorities as well. So always be aware of what it is in your area and in your region for your public health. We also consult and work with our insurance. And we get lots of legal help to not only translate the government regulations, but make sure we are making sure that our protocol does follow the regulations that are put out. And they really help to support the sports and what we can and can't do at this time. With Volleyball Canada being our national sport organization, we have to also follow their protocol and stay aligned with that. But that's pretty easy for Ontario because we're pretty far behind the other provinces. And just to keep in mind, the return to play protocol is your tool to take to your facilities and permitted stores. This is, they may have additional, and they do, they have additional requirements that you will need to follow in order to get your facility, to be able to go into their facility for, for, in order for them to issue a permit. So just keep that in mind. But that's the nice thing. If you have any questions on our return to play or any support that you need, we, we help contact municipalities, different facilities, if they have questions around our return to play protocol. And just so we can make sure that we can get volleyball happening throughout the province. And it's very different from municipality to municipality to facility, how comfortable they are to have volleyball or not in their facility. So we're happy to help in that. So as I, as I mentioned, I just wanted to go in a bit into the comments we're getting from the public health authorities that we've been sending the return to play protocol to. It's, it's great. Sometimes they have some other more specific requirements for their area that they provide back to us. But the one thing that they always send back to me whenever I send a return to play protocol is that please utilize their fact sheets and educational resources. They're there, they're available on their websites. And they're really well done. So don't recreate anything. Use, use the resources that are there. Just to give you a brief outline on Volleyball Canada's, we are in line as far as keep, it's very basic. Keep group sizes to a minimal number. Keep your volleyballs designated for a group. Make sure you always clean your volleyballs. Eliminate all unnecessary contact, which as you'll see in our piece, that's a government regulation in Ontario. And always maintain good hygiene. And remember, if you have a choice, outdoor is deemed safer than indoors. I've actually moved this slide more to the beginning because it's pretty simple. If you don't follow return to play protocol, you won't have insurance. That's the requirement as far as from the OVA. And with our insurance companies, our brokers, so just keep in mind, you need to follow the return to play protocol in order to be covered under our insurance. COVID is excluded from any insurance policy. So just keep in mind that you need to make sure that you mitigate your own risk and the risk of your club, your organization, the OVA, and maintain all documentation. That's why there's so many mitigating risks and factors and compliance pieces in order to operate and play right now. Because you do have to be careful and you have to be safe. So that makes, that all of those requirements help to mitigate your risk on getting sued. So government regulations. I don't think I need to explain what physical distancing is, but I did want to just be very clear. Stage 3 reopening in our province, physical distancing is required. So just keep that in mind. So even though there's, as we'll go into a couple more slides, there's an exception for team sports. Keep in mind that physical distancing is required. So when you go into a facility, if there's spectators there, if the kids are not playing volleyball, physical distancing is a requirement and you can't say you're part of the same household or social circle. As soon as you're in an organized training activity or in a facility, that you then have to maintain physical distancing and follow their rules and their requirements. The gathering size of since Stage 3 regions has been increased. It is 100 persons, but you also now have 100 spectators for outdoors. You'll also see these are the regulations within, when we do launch our indoor, it will follow the gathering size for 50. But just the other piece to keep in mind with this is you're still limited by the facility. If the facility can't accommodate that many people, it will be limited to what they can accommodate. And maintain physical distancing. So as I mentioned, physical distancing is required. We now know the gathering sizes. There is an exception for team sports. It was recognized that team sports cannot be played. We don't have any breach of physical distancing. It's kind of hard to kind of think through any team sport. It's pretty difficult to play. So the exception is, is that a team sports where physical contact can be eliminated, or if there's no physical contact, or if you can modify to eliminate your physical contact, it can be played, but not for prolonged periods of time. So that's something to keep in mind. And they also have some regulations around some leagues, some limited league play with this 50 physical, with 50 participants. So we'll get into some more detail as we get into our protocol on that one. So this is, if anyone's been following our return to play protocol from the beginning, this is our list of how do you comply? And how do I make sure that I'm following all return to play protocols? This part has not changed. What changes as we go through and we move on to our next stages and versions? It's the programming piece. How, what, what the programming will now look like. So the other thing is we continue to add resources as we go. More gets released, we find more. So one of the new appendixes that is added is how to approach a facility? What do I need to take to them? How do I make sure that I can, you know, still, hopefully that, that facility will accept volleyball? Because some are still very reluctant. They don't know which sports to accept and which not, which team sports. And so always, always share with them. You have the provincial sport organizations return to play protocol that does help. And that obviously their rules are, are very diligent. And it is to, it is to keep the participants safe. So if you want to get back into play and have, look at your return to play protocol, you need to make sure that the risk mitigation assessment checklist is done. And that gives you an idea if you're able to mitigate enough of, of the areas to bring your risk down to a suitable level that's safe for your participants. And we need to, the OVA needs an acknowledgement form that you do understand the protocols. And then we can connect you in with the insurance. So return your acknowledgement form to info@OntarioVolleyball.org. And then, then we can make sure that you have the insurance that you need. Even if you have participants from indoor previous, from the beginning of the year that are going out to do a training session, there's now an additional waiver for COVID. So please make sure, you need to make sure that they have completed the waiver for COVID, even if, like I said, even if they've done the general OVA waiver form. So that's something to keep in mind. If they're a new member, they have to do all the waiver package, the Rowan's Law, Code of Conduct concussion awareness, sign off. So just be aware of that and make sure that the COVID waiver is completed. The education plan is something that you really want to make sure that anyone, not only running your sessions, your training sessions, whatever event you're doing, but also your participants. We've had some really good examples from clubs making sure that parents, participants are aware of the protocol, aware of what to expect when they come to that facility. Make sure that they know what they have to bring prior. Make sure the waiver is complete. Don't show up if obviously you can't pass the health screening. Most people are getting used to some of these, but it also gives some assurance for the participants that you're really on the ball about keeping them safe. And that's really important. The response plan is another one that's important just from it's going to change from region to region. We have a sample of what you need to put together in your response plan in the appendix. So feel free to pick it up and always email if you have any questions. Health screening must be done before any participant steps into your activity. And the facility will also have their requirements. Make sure that our health screening questionnaire is complete enough for the facility that you're going to. It should be, seems to have every question that we seem to have picked up from any health questionnaires that we've seen. And for contact tracing, you need to have participant tracking and make sure that that is complete. So the programming piece, what changes in Stage 3? Scrimmages and gameplay. They are allowed with no physical contact. So the, the difference is tricky is that it's no physical contact. So you can actually breach physical distancing. So with that, it's a limited duration. So please keep that in mind that even if you're running a practice with the players, if there's skill work and things that you can do by still maintaining physical distancing, do that. And then maybe just your last hour is some gameplay work. But keep that in mind where, just because you're allowed to do it, you still want to limit it. It's still risky for the chief medical officer. Still, they deem team sports to be a high-risk activity. So keep that in mind and keep that in mind for your participants. If the skill level of them is that it's a little more difficult them to, to do drills without eliminating the physical contact, then take them back into some more predictable and controlled drills. And so make sure that you can really eliminate any physical contact. So as I said, you need to modify to minimize any incidental physical contact. So obviously that will happen, but please try to find a way to minimize it. Take frequent, frequent breaks, clean, sanitize hands. We kind of suggest 30 minutes, but I mean, obviously adjust to, to your practice, to your schedule, to what, if you're doing a little game play session. The limit session duration that we suggest is not to exceed 120 minutes. Obviously you can see there's a lot of play that could happen in that amount of time when you're looking at what is a, a, a recommended session duration is 120 minutes. So just to talk a little bit more in detail around that programming is as we said, any deliberate physical contact needs to be eliminated. So no high fives, no huddles, handshakes. When you switch sides is there a way to make sure that, or do you need to switch sides to make sure that physical, not only physical contact is avoided, but limiting your breaches of physical distancing. Make sure that any static interactions, if you have a coach talking to the player, make sure they're maintaining two meters distance. Once a timeout, if you're doing a little game play, make sure the players are staying two meters apart. So any off-court, at any time, any participant coach, anyone, always must respect physical distancing. The only time the breach of physical distancing can happen is when there's a game play. And again, in, as all of our examples, make sure there's enough space around the courts to be able to maintain this, to make sure that balls don't get mixed into other courts. And just give yourself enough space. And I think that will help too with some of the participants who may be a little nervous about coming out. If you show that you have all these safety precautions, you're going to get a lot more, people feeling a lot more comfortable to come out. And if you need to utilize visual cues, just like the grocery store and their arrows that I always seem to mix up. A little bit about league play. If you are interested in running a league play, the government regulation is you can have up to 50 participants per league division. So you can have multiple league divisions, but you cannot have any interplay between those league divisions. So just keep that in mind. And again, that will always be facility dependent. So there's really, I don't know of any outdoor facility besides Ashbridge's, which they're not providing us any permits to do gameplay, where you could have more than, you know, a couple of these league divisions of up to 50 people. But just keep in mind that the limit is 50 and that you can't have interplay between those league divisions. And our protocol recommends that you have only four, up to the four participants per side when it's an eight by eight court. And if you're going to run six participants or athletes on a side, only on the larger court. So that would be, for example, especially on grass or like a rec beach league, if you're going to run with the six beaches, do it on the larger courts, the nine by nine. And now I move into, Suze is going to go over what the OVA has come up with.
Thanks Joanne. Good to see everybody. Glad you all can join us. As Joanne and Lauren mentioned, if there's any questions throughout this information session, feel free to just jump on the chat and ask away. So our OVA Beach Friendly's, the information just got posted on our website tonight. I believe Lauren has the link updated in the chat. If you guys like to go check it out, as well as all the registration links. So these are just, what we really want to stress is that these are just fun events. Exhibition style across our three locations, London, Horseshoe and Barry and Pickering. So we'll be offering multiple age groups. Not all of the age groups like we normally offer for our beach tour sessions. So just 13, 14, 16, and youth open. If your age group is not listed, we're just encouraging athletes to play up. Again, these are just for fun, just for an opportunity for athletes to get out on the sand. So please, if you're a 15-year athlete, 16-year is probably the age group you'd want to be registering for. Each location will have each age group over the weekend. So events will take place on Saturday and Sunday, and there'll be AM and PM waves. And each age group will be offered each weekend at each location. So events will start Saturday, August 8th. They'll be every Saturday and Sunday throughout the month of August. Registration is open, as I said, on our website and it will take you through NRS. Cost is $60 per team plus HST. There will be two waves offered each day, total playing time of an hour and 45 minutes. So based on teams who are randomly put into pools, most likely it will be four teams per pool. You'll only play those four teams. There won't be any teams sitting off. You'll play each team in your pool, two sets to 21 or 35 minutes, whichever comes first. You'll have 15 minutes in between each match. At that time, the volleyballs will be left on the court and they will be disinfected. And because there is no team sitting off, all matches are going to be self-refereed. There's no scoreboards and there's no score reporting required. Again, just to reiterate, these are just for fun. Get some gameplay, get the kids back on the sand. So just some of the protocols we're adhering to as part of these OVA Beach Friendly's. Obviously, all our return to play protocol must be followed by all participants at all times. Each participant obviously will need to submit their OVA waiver. If you've already done this for another program throughout the OVA, you won't need to do it again, but you'll only need to do this once per season. Contact tracing information for both the athlete and the spectator will be, need to be completed before each event via Formstack. And you can only have one spectator per athlete. Again, we're just minimizing our numbers for gatherings at each location. If for any reason your spectator information changes, that's fine. From when you filled out the form the day before, that's fine. We can take the information as long as it's updated when the players check in the day of the event. The daily health screening questionnaire will need to be completed. And that will be done at check-in. And then no warmups will be able to take place until all participants check in. So again, just to make sure that the daily health screening questionnaire is complete and everything is good, then the team can proceed to warm up. Athletes will be able to find out what court they will be on, at what facility, at what time. So that way at least parents, if they want to set up a small tent or umbrella, they can do that while the players are checking in. But just want to reiterate that no warmups can begin until the athlete has checked in. Like I said, volleyballs will be disinfected between each match. So please be sure that the balls stay on the court. Nets and the admin area will be disinfected between each wave. So the AM and the PM wave, and then also after the PM wave for the next day. As Joanne has mentioned numerous times, physical distancing of two meter must be maintained while you're not on the court. It's one of the other reasons we're only saying that side switches can take place between sets. It's again, to minimize those breaches of physical distancing. And obviously no physical contact during, during gameplay, high fives, slaps, all that kind of fun stuff. Check-in times are only 30 minutes prior to start time of the matches. Again, just to minimize the number of people gathered in one location at one time. We will have staggered start times for the events of about 15 minutes. So there shouldn't be that much overlapping with the two waves. I think that was about it. Oh, and then after, after games are done, we'll just ask that teams, athletes, spectators vacate the venue immediately after as we will have to clear the venue and prepare for the next wave. And also again, minimize our number of people in a gathering. Just want to reiterate, it's, it's obviously not, this is not the beach tour. There are no points, there's no rankings. It's, it's not for, unfortunately, it's not for Ontario championship medals or anything like that. This is just really to get the kids out on the sand, having some fun, playing a sport we all love, beach volleyball. So again, fun is the key. It's not about rankings, points, medals, anything like that. So that's about it. Jo, off to you.
Lauren's going to collect some of our questions. So while she's looking at that, I just wanted to make note that there are future Town Halls coming up. And so next week we have our coach eligibility and in Norwood's new, followed up by our Stage 3 indoor volleyball return to play protocol. And then as we see other topics and questions coming in, we'll schedule August 17th and 24th as we continue to launch more programming. And all these can be found on our OVA website. And when you go to the COVID section, there's now a Town Hall session, little black box. And in it, it also has any recordings from, well, from tonight and from past ones as well. So go for it Lauren.
Can I say something before the questions?
No.
Okay, I will say it anyways.
Of course you can. But I would like you to know my sunset picture.
Is what?
My sunset picture.
No, I just wanted to say something about the Friendly's that Suze is putting together. I think it's an amazing opportunity for the athletes to go and play some games. I just want to make sure that everybody is aware that for some athletes that have, may have not done that much this, this summer, an hour and 45 minutes of games within a couple of hours, that could be pretty strenuous on their bodies if they haven't been training or anything. So I would really encourage you, whether you're a coach or a club executive or a parent, that you encourage your athletes to, to train before they attend an event like this. You know, it's, it's, it's been multiple months now where it's been difficult to find an opportunity to play volleyball. So make sure that your athletes have been jumping, that they're, you know, accustomed to, to the heat and to training outside as, as it could be, as it could be difficult. Or actually, if you haven't done much for, for a long time, you could be injury prone. So just my little warning, putting my hat of Athlete Development Director here.
Thanks LP. Okay, great. So since we were just talking about the Friendly's, Suze, I have a question for you here. Will all the competition be two on two? Or could athletes want to, if they wanted to play three on three, four on four, would that be allowed if it's for fun?
As of right now, we have everything based on two on two. Again, just to keep our numbers low, we realize we'll still be under the 50 at most places if we go more. But to keep that small bubble of our divisions at a very minimum, really if we're two on two for four teams in a pool and that's all you're playing, you're just seeing six other people. So we're really trying to keep these numbers low, even though our gathering size is growing. And some of them, you know, we're getting up into even 40-plus athletes. So based on that facility, so it's just two and on two at this time.
Perfect, thanks. Another one for you Suze. Is Formstack available for clubs to use? I know you mentioned it earlier for the waiver to sign. Would that be available for clubs?
As far as I know, Oakland might want to chime in here, but I don't think it costs us anything to have. And you can just have an account, you just make an account on Formstack online. And then you can send out all And then you can send out all your forms and it's a great way to gather information as well.
Perfect. Okay, Joanne, I have some questions for you on the protocol itself. So you were talking before about the waiver forms. Is the OVA providing any other forms or is it just the, just the waiver form for the community?
Is the question related to just waivers or the other, the appendix and the download of the health questionnaire is available? The, even a participant, a sample participant contact tracing form. So all those requirements that we ask in the protocol, they're downloadable on, from the website.
And the response plan is provided on there as well.
Yeah.
Perfect.
And if there's something else that they're looking for, they can just send us, send us in the question. We can direct them there.
Definitely. You mentioned you could do this for league play, but in terms of the training environment, can you have up to four people on one side of the net? You mentioned you could do that for the league play, but can you actually do that in a training environment?
Yes. Yes. Just keep in mind, the more participants you have, the more right there breaching physical distancing. So just keep that in mind and try to limit it. So if you don't need to have four on each side, if you can split them up and just have, if they are doing two on two and you can only have, and you have four athletes interacting with each other, it's better not to mix those all eight athletes. Keep four practicing with each other and then the other four practicing with each other or playing against each other. So just wherever you can limit those interactions, that, that will be the best.
Great. And maybe if you could go over what is classified as league play as opposed to a regular training camp or a training camp environment?
That's a great question. I haven't even heard the government's definition of that. That's actually when the, the team sports, the different provincial sport organizations we meet trying to help provide more information and clarification around the government regulations. This is the one that has come up. So the one thing that's talked about is if you do have a group playing in a series like a week, like week after week, and they need to be the same 50, don't mix them. So that league would then have rankings, they're playing games. That's pretty much, they don't really know how to classify it. But if you think to your like hockey beer league, that's what they were thinking of when they put the league allowance in, when they put the, the government regulation in that league play could happen. They just didn't want to keep having them mix and mix and mix with all different leagues. So when you do have a, one thing for beach volleyball that's really nice is because we can play with two on two or four on four, there's not a lot of people and not as many participants. So it's a lot easier to manage and to keep those interactions to just to a lower number. So that's where you can have a training session or a gameplay or an exhibition as Suzanne has just presented with a limited number and just keep it very simple and not have too many people interact.
Awesome. There's a question here about if clubs have training taking place on a field of grass, would that be covered by insurance?
Great question. Yes. So we go back to follow the return to play protocol. And to confirm your location, just send it in to info@OntarioVolleyball.org. Sherry will make sure that she gets the insurance certificate that you need. If an additional insured needs to be added. And if she has any questions, she'll then send it in to Jen Harkness, our Director of Finance, and she gets it off to the insurance broker. So always good to check.
For sure. And I just have a question here that LP had sent me from the registration. And it has to do with live sporting events. They included a link to the Government of Ontario website. And it quotes, "Players are not yet permitted to play against players outside of their league or group." So then the question is, given this restriction, how can a club host a tournament with players from outside their own club?
So the, we, we don't suggest a tournament, as we would know. For example, we have a very modified gameplay situation that limits, as you can see my theme, there's limited interaction of, of the breaching of physical distancing with players. So there's, there's a government regulation that, if we go back to my presentation, that piece of team sports, we're allowed to have some limited gameplay that avoids physical contact. So that's what a little mini exhibition can happen. So we fall under that.
Perfect. So I don't see any other questions right now in the chat box. You guys did great presenting. Yeah. So one of the questions is, is there an estimated timeline for indoor return to play? Jo, I think you covered when we were going to be going over that earlier.
Yeah. So the town hall will be scheduled for August 10th. We should hope to have the, right now it's in draft mode and we, as, as you saw from our return to play process, we have to go through legal, insurance and board approval. And then we'll get it out to you as soon as we can. But it, it, but it's very like, we haven't seen a change in the government regulations. Stage three is pretty much here for some time. One of the changes will be, you know, some of the regions that now will open up into stage three. So the protocol will be, for indoor will be very similar to this outdoor one. So you're going to have a jump on the, the indoor info attending this one. So it'll be very similar. Because really our sport, if we're careful, we can avoid physical contact. It's not like, you know, basketball, like I'm not quite sure, there wasn't one picture I saw from basketball that there, you know how basketball always has physical contact. It's a very physical game. I don't know how soccer, right? So I look at the other team sports and I'm like, okay, we're not so bad. So really, if we're careful, we can keep our participants safe. I do stress that the Chief Medical Officer does still identify team sports as, as a high risk activity. So really be careful of how you modify it and keep your participants safe. The other piece of it is, since we have a bit of time, I'll just share with you some more information we were shared from a government presentation was around just a different residents, like population Ontarians, about where they, where they, how they feel about COVID and re-engaging. And I'll get, I'll get more of the information, but some of the things that really hit me was we have to be aware that there's going to be some people that are afraid. And you're really going to have to put a lot of assurances in place and show them that you're following a protocol to keep them safe in order for them to even feel comfortable to re-engage. So for some of those households, in order for them to have their kids come back and play sports, it's going to take some time. And they really need to see that what's happening is safe. So we need to really create some really positive experiences to have people want to come back and engage in sport. And there's another, so that's about 20% actually of Ontarians. There's another segmentation called nearly ready, but maybe. And those ones are, you show them you have protocol. And if you're not going to stand for the people to be reckless, they will come back and engage. And that's another 20%. So that's where they're really, they're the, they're the segmentation that are looking for the governing body for the organizers to be very diligent and they will, they'll be there. They, they will be right there, ready to participate. So again, like our staff have been clearly instructed that if people are not following the protocol, we're not going to jeopardize our permits, our facilities. By some people that don't want to follow the rules, they will be asked to leave, they will be removed. And we don't, we're not going to, this is, this is something that if we work together, our whole sport can come back into action. And so we're going to be, we have to be very diligent with it and take care of our participants and keep them safe.
You may have had some new ones, Lynn.
Yeah, there's, there's just a couple more here. One about the signing policy, if any of you feel up for answering that. The questions around signing or pre-signing players and if they have between 36 hours and August 31st to accept.
I can answer that one if you want, Jo.
Absolutely, because I will mix up the timing.
For sure.
Thanks.
So the, with the signing policy, what happens is that the minimum, the minimum time that the offer has to last is 36 hours. So once you, you make a resigning offer, it is good for a minimum of 36 hours. And it is good until August 31st. But in between, you can essentially have any sort of conditions that you can include in your, in your, in your offer letter to, to the player. But what you have to know is that it's minimum 36 hours and that it expires on the, on the 31st essentially. That's my understanding from my conversation with Carrie.
Oh, and I think that actually there, they will have more information coming out soon as well on that whole application process. So.
And the other thing I guess to know while we're on that topic, for those who may have missed that, is that in August, it's just resigning. So it has to be players that were with your club this past year. And then, and then it's in September that the new application process kind of kicks in for players that were not part of your club. So. But that should be all covered in last week's town hall as well, I believe. So if you can find a recording.
The recording's up.
It's a great watch.
I just want to jump in. I did see Oakland, you said that Formstack was not free, but they have a free trial and then there's different prices. So to whoever asked that question, the other option is your Google Forms. That's another good way of collecting forms, questions from anybody, you know, participating. You can do it that way as well.
Awesome. Thanks, Sue's. Sue, since you were just chatting, I'll ask you a question here. So there's no OVA beach championships this year, correct? But is there anything from VC? Will they be having nationals this year for beach?
No, no. So everything this year has been canceled in terms of formalized beach tours, Ontario championships and nationals. And we just look forward to hosting again next year for beach nationals again at Ash Bridges. So looking forward to that.
Definitely. And then, Jo, this one's for you. Are there any efforts being made by PSOs in general to work on convincing school boards to allow permits to happen for the athletes to get back in the gym, that sort of thing?
Oh, good timing. The sports are presenting to an MPP tomorrow. So I have five minutes and that's the point. We're going to need support from the education side, from school boards on being able to be back in gyms. So basketball's in the same situation obviously as well. So that's obviously something that we are, we've been talking about a lot and it's great because we do have a group of sports that have been, been able to provide information in. And there's also subcommittees on return to sport, return to play that we've been able to also feed our input into as well. So yeah, we're hopefully, I really, I know we all are hoping that, we hope the school boards really see that. And I know they need the permit revenue as well. So we shall know more in the next couple of weeks.
For sure. Fingers crossed. All right. So I don't see any other questions here, Joanne and Sue's. Do you have any closing comments, statements to make?
Sue's, if you don't, I'll jump in.
Oh, no, not really. Just thanks, everybody, for taking the time to come out to our information session tonight. As I said, the website was released just a couple of hours ago. I know we already had teams registered. So if there's any questions that come out of the information provided or registration forms, please feel free to send me an email.
Yeah, jump on the registration. It's going to be, it's going to be full. And the, I just want to add and say it's going to be nice to be able to get some volleyball action happening. So I think it's really, this has not been easy for the different modifications and different things that Sue and her team is putting together. So obviously we're going to be monitoring it closely. If we need to change something, hopefully we'll be able to add more events. But we just ask you to stay adaptable, provide us feedback. And I'm excited to be able for the athletes to have an opportunity to play a bit. So thanks for engaging in this to be able to help getting them back to action. So we will keep working on our side and I will switch back to my indoor side to get some more return to play protocol for indoor. So thank you for attending and have a safe and great evening.
Thanks, Joanne. Just to close, we'll have the recording up tomorrow. For those who'd like to re-watch, it'll be on the OVA website. And yeah, thanks again for joining us tonight. We'll see you at the next town hall in two weeks.
No, there's one next week.
There's one next week. I'm just kidding.
There's one next week on what's new in coaching and coaching eligibility and yeah.
But it'll be on Tuesday.
Sorry, and on Tuesday, correct, because of the holiday.
It'll be on Tuesdays, the holiday. Yes. Thank you. Thanks, team. Thanks for jumping in here tonight. All right. Have a great evening, everyone. Bye.
Bye.